A meeting of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Here.
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 Before we begin, I'd like to just make a brief statement on the shooting in Texas. The City of Calumet City, the entire City Council, elected officials, we want to offer our prayers and sympathy to the nineteen children and two teachers who were killed in the horrific shooting in Texas. Many of you know, not only the state of Illinois, but City of Calumet City, we stand against gun violence and now I have sent a letter and talked to our federal legislators. And one of the things we're asking our federal legislators is to approve background checks, universal background checks. Many of you know, recently Governor Pritzker signed a bill which I strongly supported in Springfield, which banned ghost guns in Illinois. These are guns that come in from other states that are used in criminal activity. We also passed thirty-two similar legislations in Springfield to put a check on gun violence. Recently, this week, my office ordered all flags to fly half-staff in a semblance of support, not only for the families and the victims, but also a sign of support to our school system, our teachers, to families, and as a message from the City of Calumet City. So my office, along with Police Chief Colash, Alderman Williams, who is Chair of Public Safety and members of Public Safety, recently we've reached out to schools to make sure that they are practicing safety protocols and also that they are keeping our kids safe. So I would ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence for the nineteen children and teachers who were killed. Thank you, everyone. If everyone can rise again for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I would like to, we have representatives from FEMA here, so at this time I'd like to make a motion or entertain a motion to deviate from the regular order of business to take up item on the agenda, item eight A, which is FEMA recognizing the City of Calumet City on the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Patton. All in favor? At this time, we would like to call up Val Williams and representatives from FEMA.
Good evening, City Council. The mayor spoke about this once before. Our CRS rating, community rating system, that has allowed residents to have their insurance, property insurance in flood zones reduced at least twenty-five percent. Our rating is five. Not many communities have reached that goal. We're one of very few, am I right? I'd like to call out those that are responsible for getting us to this point, in addition to the City Council. Director Tillman's office carried the bulk of the workload. The Fire Department assisted. Both chiefs were involved, especially Chief Ben D'Nelli. Also, team members are here from my department, Donaleski and Richard Chambers. And let me introduce FEMA, Tom Sibek and Eric Klukuski from this region. I think that encompasses several states, am I correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council and community. It's an honor to be here tonight and thank you for having us. It's really truly an honor to recognize communities that go above and beyond to proactively reduce flood risk and make local homes and businesses more resilient to disasters. Calumet City has been at the forefront of these efforts for more than twenty years when they first entered FEMA's community rating system. This is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages communities' flood plain management activities that exceed the minimum National Flood Insurance Program requirements. Communities that join the CRS make flood insurance discounts available to its residents. They reduce flood damages to insurable property, strengthen and support the insurance aspects of the National Flood Insurance Program, and encourage a comprehensive approach to flood plain management. As a result of Calumet City's hard work, these goals and vigilance in practicing higher flood plain standards, the city has earned a new rating of five, saving most residents up to twenty-five percent in their flood policies. Let's put this into perspective. Of the fifteen-hundred CRS communities across the country, only a hundred and seventy have achieved a Class Five. This is clearly, clearly no small feat. Of note, the city has implemented a higher flood plain management standard in areas beyond those that are at high flood risk, and that's thanks to local building and zoning department and their commitment to enforcement and permitting. Officials were also proactive in the development and subsequent adoption of the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Hazard mitigation plans are one of the critical absolutes for a successful emergency management system and a key component to reducing vulnerability to disasters in their efforts. In addition, the city's instituted draining maintenance procedures to inspect streams, ditches, and waterways at least once a year. Public Works crews behind these efforts often go unrecognized, but they play such an important role in establishing a sound local flood plain management program. And we all know that flooding is one of the highest risks here in Cook County and here in the area as well. A lot of your successes can be attributed to many organizations and local leaders who've dedicated their careers to making the city more resilient to flooding disasters. Mayor Jones, Director Tillman, Department Head Williams, and the entire City of Calumet City, on behalf of FEMA and the Administrator, I'd like to commend you for this achievement and most importantly, your commitment to the highest levels of flood plain protection for your residents. And most importantly, this does hit on one of the key areas of our strategic plan, which is creating more sound and understandable climate resilience, and you're attaining that. And from all to you here at FEMA Region Five, greatly appreciate that and look forward to continued service. Thank you and congratulations. And we do have a plaque suitable for putting wherever you decide to show the commitment to this as well.
I will ask the Alder the Aldermen and Cheryl Tillman, the Fire Chief, to join us up in front. While we are in deviation, I would further like to make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of litigation, employment issues, and what other matters? Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Williams. We'll be in executive session at six thirteen PM. We will come out and take care of business on the agenda. We're in executive session, so please stand by. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. We are back in the regular order of business at eight oh two PM. Under item four, public comment, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on any items on the agenda? Next matter is approval of minutes. Minutes will be at the next meeting for the meetings that we've had. Reports of standing committees, Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Finance Committee, the hold was called May twenty-third. In attendance were myself, Finance Member Alderman Ramon Williams, Finance Member Anthony Smith, Alderman DeAndre Tillman, Alder Woman Monet Wilson, City Clerk Figs, City Treasurer Tarka, Alderman Patton, Sixth Ward Alderman Patton. There was lengthy discussion regarding items that was deferred to this particular committee. Last meeting was, last council meeting, was lengthy discussion regarding the Benford Brown invoices. There was a consensus for the Alderman to require Benford to attend a future meeting. She is willing to attend a future meeting to discuss the particular concerns that the Alderman have. Alderman Patton gave a report just pretty much on voicing concerns in the absence of Alderman Navarrete. She also advised me to have you guys submit any questions so that she can be prepared for the next meeting. Submit those questions to her in email. And we look forward to calling another committee meeting, not a committee of the whole, just a committee meeting to further discuss. That's what you all's wishes were at that meeting. That's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Public Safety, Alderman Williams?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton? Thank you, Alderman. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. The Ordinances and Resolutions Committee will be calling a meeting Tuesday, June sixth at a time to be announced. The agenda will be posted in upcoming dates. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alder Woman Wilson?
The numbers per the live interviews that went on today for COVID are increasing. I am encouraging everyone to wear a mask. It is optional, but wear a mask. We, of course, pray for our children nationwide, in Texas as well as in the Chicagoland area, and our own children in Calumet City. As of today, I do not have access to emails, so a lot of what I will be voting on today will be limited because I have not had an opportunity to review the supplemental package that my colleagues receive via email. That is all I have.
Thank you, Alder Woman Wilson. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Smith?
Yes, Permits and Licensing Committee will be calling, be calling a meeting within the next two weeks. In that meeting, we'll be discussing both, first and foremost, number of licenses that have been approved or still pending as well as incoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick announcement to residents to please report any vacant housing that has overgrowth, bushes, grass. We do have a contractor that's, we do have someone that was awarded a bid to help us with that, so please report again to Public Works or your Alderman or the Mayor's Office, any property that you see overgrowth, any abandoned properties. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports, we'll start with Alderman Navarrete.
No report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports, Alder Woman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports, Alderman Tillman?
Two things. First, I need to correct the date for the Ordinances and Resolutions Meeting is May thirty-first, this coming Tuesday. June sixth is actually our Town Hall meeting in the Third Ward. That is at Downey Park, six thirty. We're going to be discussing some economic development updates, so I encourage all the residents to come out. Again, that is June sixth for the Town Hall meeting, May thirty-first for the Ordinances and Resolutions Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson? Me, Alderman Williams. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Person around the guide that makes all things possible. Just want to let the residents know that the food box giveaway will be discontinued until further notice. There were some administrative issues on the township level that we're trying to work through, so I will let you know when that program will be reconvened. The board meeting will be June sixth, along with the Third Ward, at six thirty at Downey Park, three hundred Jeffrey Boulevard. I will see you then. And June eighteenth, do not forget, is the pre-Father's Day and Juneteenth celebration. Starts at twelve. Free food giveaway starting at twelve while supplies last. We'll also be giving away book bags and there will be a bingo tent for the seniors or anyone that would like to participate. There'll be some prizes, of course, donated by Mayor Jones, who just found out that he's going to be donating those prizes. But we appreciate that, so we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to briefly remind the Fifth Ward residents to continue to call my office with concerns and issues. You see something, say something. Street cleaning started yesterday. I wanted to encourage the residents to please be mindful to follow the signs if they say no parking on this side of the street. Please be considerate for your neighbors and other members of that block that wish to have the streets cleaned so they could do it as efficiently as possible. Also, if you notice any trash and debris in the alleys, please contact my office, seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-five. Due to the increase in COVID numbers, my office still has KN-95 masks available and hand sanitizer. So if you guys need that or you know someone in the community that's in need of those items, don't hesitate to call my office, seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. First, I've received emails, texts from residents about grass growth on vacant houses. A lot of them are the same houses that we've been dealing with for the last few years. Public Works should have them on the list. You know, I've been sending them over to them as we get them, you know, and so I hope that those will be taken care of, you know, in very short order, especially because several of them, as I drove past today, are, you know, probably getting close to waist-high. So continue sending them to me and I'll continue getting them to Public Works and hopefully we'll get them taken care of quickly. Secondly, I was notified by a member of the IT Department earlier this week that my city phone is not working. Apparently, if you call, if you try to call my office, it rings and rings and rings and then picks up and hangs up, as if somebody picked up the receiver and hung it up, which I promise you isn't happening. So if you need to get ahold of me until that is sorted out and I've been, and I'm notified that the phone is working again, you can email me at jpatton@calumetcity.org, or you can call the Mayor's Office and I'm sure they'll relay the messages to me as well. And finally, I would like to thank everybody that came out for our first Sixth Ward Coffee and Conversation of the Summer, two Saturdays ago, at Our Lady of Knock Church. It was our best turnout yet in our second year of doing this. A lot of new faces, a lot of good conversation and good questions about what's going on in the city. And then, and the other thing that came out of that was, you know, my wife, along with a very eager Sixth Ward resident, Mrs. Campos, have decided to start the Sixth Ward Garden Club. And my wife Molly and Mrs. Campos are actually planting starter flowers that we will get a flyer out to everybody for a date. If you would like to participate, you can come pick up a pre-started flower kit and plant it in your garden in your home, and we'll turn it into some sort of a contest later on this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank all the residents who came to the May monthly Seventh Ward Meeting. Great questions, great feedback. Also, I want to remind the residents, the next Seventh Ward Town Hall Meeting, which is monthly, is every third Saturday, with the next Saturday being June the eighteenth from ten AM to noon at twenty-four State Street at the Calumet City Public Safety Training Center. If you have any questions on that, please contact seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-seven. Also, I want to continue to encourage the residents to report any vacant houses or any homes that are unkept. Our city has started its maintenance of properties around this time, so if there's a property that maybe has significant delayed maintenance as far as lawn care and so forth, please let us know. Also, please report any suspicious activity. Give me a call and give our office a call at seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-seven. Thank you.
Item eight, informational items to be accepted and placed on file, items eight A through I. Are there any questions regarding items eight A through I? If not, is there a motion to accept items A, eight A through I, and place them on file?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, item nine, new business, various action items, items nine A, one, two, three, four, five. Are there any questions about items nine A through five? Items nine A, one, two, is there a motion to approve items nine A, one, and two? Motion made by Alderman Patton?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Roll call.
Yes.
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 For one and two, yes.
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 And Alderman Patton, Alderman Tillman, do you want to defer this to your committee?
Yes, may I like to make a motion to refer item number three to the Ordinances and Resolutions Committee?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Patton. Roll call.
Yes.
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 And for items four and five, is there a motion to approve items four and five?
So moved.
Just a quick question about four.
Yes.
Are these cameras?
City Engineer, the goal is with the traffic enforcement cameras to do a study. That could be cameras, and we have our Police Chief here as well, either cameras or isoplate readers, chief. The motion on the agenda, number four, chief, is about directing the city attorney to research possible installation of speed cameras. Is that an action, chief, you want to defer, or would you like to move forward?
I'd have to look into some of that, Mayor, to see how we're actually going to do the study out there.
Would you like, you know, Alderman, can you make a motion to defer this to Public Safety?
That's fine. Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. You know what, roll call on this. Four, four and five, Alderman, or?
No, just number four.
Just number four. Madam Clerk, roll call on item four? Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Item number five, is there a motion to approve item number five on the agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Item B are fence construction and garage construction. Have the Alderman had the opportunity to review?
No. I have not.
So Alderman, would you like to remove the second ward?
Director Tillman, are you okay with what's on? No, I will go with what Director Tillman has agreed to.
Thank you, Alderman. So item B are fence construction and garage construction. Is there a motion to approve the items on the agenda? Motion made by Alderman Patton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Item C are resolutions. I'd like to table item four. We approved this at the May twelfth agenda. This was action, our Deputy Fire Chief, and Fire Chief brought to our attention. So items C, resolutions, one, two, three, one, two, three, and five. Are there any questions about resolutions and ordinance, one, two, three, and five?
May I have the supplemental for three?
Yes, Alderman.
Can we postpone voting on that until I have an opportunity to review that supplemental?
So let's take one and two. Actually, you know what? Alderman Gardner, you have the motion for items two. So let's take resolutions one. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance as so posted without the necessity of prior posting, items one? Is there a motion? Motion made by Alderman Tillman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Roll call on item C one. Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Item number two, Alderman Gardner, you have the motion for item two?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the litigation matter discussed.
So moved.
Alderman, can you state the names?
Oh, the Wolf Matter and the DeGliotti Matter and the Norwood Matter.
Is motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, please call a roll on item two.
Yes.
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 Item number three will be tabled to provide the information to the Alder Woman. Item number five, resolution. Is there a motion for the resolution for item number five?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith.
May I have that as well? I don't have what that is. Can we table that until I have an opportunity to review?
Item number five will be tabled. Is that a consensus, Alderman?
Quick question, Mayor, on that one. Will that obstruct implementation of the program?
No, the program was approved and this is the residential assistance program. This was just setting forth guidelines. Some of the guidelines include that the Alderman would have to approve residents who get assistance given the Alderman copies of the residents who have applied for the program, but just setting forth the guidelines and the specifications of the program. So it wouldn't delay it.
So any requests that have already been presented up to this point, those will be honored, they won't be?
Yes, they'll be honored.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And the guidelines will be on the June ninth agenda. We have time to set forth that. Item D are financial matters. Financial matters D one through, did we do item number six? Mayor? Item number six?
Is that with the same housing?
Yeah, but it's just to rescind the agreement.
So item number six coincides with item number five, which we tabled. So for the record, item number six will be tabled as well for the next agenda.
Well, I think that was just rescinding the agreement. I think we could vote on that. Is that rescinding the previous agreement back in May of, or maybe April of twenty?
Yes, twenty-one, twenty-three, I believe.
I mean, I guess that doesn't matter, but, I mean, I think we could pass unless you want to table it. I mean, it's rescinding a previous agreement and then we could talk about the new agreement.
Okay, we can rescind that agreement. I'm okay with rescinding it.
Yeah, I make a motion to pass item number six.
So Alderman Navarrete, motions to approve item number six on the agenda. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll? Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Item D are financial matters, One through 20.
I would like to table One until I'm able to review the supplementals. One, Five, Twelve. And I think that's it.
Items One, Five, and Twelve will be tabled. For the record, the motion for financial items to approve Items Two, Three, Four, Six through Eleven, and Thirteen through Twenty.
Question about Thirteen. I assume this is a treadmill for the Fire Department, correct? Is it going to the Mayor's Office or something?
Alderman, I've lost enough weight, so I don't need to treadmill to my office. This is for the Fire Department.
Is it going to help us on our insurance?
You know, Fire Chief, is it going to help us?
Police, yeah. Police Department.
Okay.
Is it going to help our officers, chief?
Yes. Excuse me for this assuming.
What kind of treadmill is this? It's $6,000. Must come with somebody standing next to you, motivating you, feeding you along the way.
So for the record, we have Items Two, Three, Four, Six through Eleven, and then Thirteen, Thirteen through Twenty. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Patton. Roll call, Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Unfinished business, Alderman Smith?
Yes, just want to quickly remind the residents, we perceive substantial increase on the Resident Assistance Program, as I like to call it RAP. If you're interested in any residential assistance, please contact the Seventh Ward Office, 708-891-8197, or email at asmith@calumetcity.org. It's a great program. We've already had a couple of residents inquire about it, expect to have more. Also, I want to continue to encourage the residents to attend the monthly meetings as well as report any concerns or questions or discrepancies that they have to the Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton, unfinished business?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner, unfinished?
Nothing further. I got to get home and season ribs.
Alderman Williams?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Tillman, unfinished business?
Nothing.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Wilson, unfinished business?
Yes. Second Ward, you can reach me at alderwomanwilson.com. Second Ward for Wilson, second Ward, spell out four, F-O-R, Wilson at gmail dot com. Or you can text me or call me at 708-586-4990. I'd like to say congratulations to all of our graduates from kindergarten, middle school, elementary, junior high, high school, and college. Congratulations at a barber program at South Suburban College. We are proud of you. I ask that you all be safe during this holiday season. Love on your neighbors and your family. God bless you and God bless Calumet City.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a quick congratulations to all the graduates, and I know tomorrow's the last day of school for Wentworth Wilson. I'm sure that's citywide, so have a great summer, be safe, and yeah, get ready for next year. Also, just a shout-out to my mother, Evelyn. She'll be her last day at Wilson School tomorrow. Eighteen years serving with the special needs children there. She previously was at St. Victor in the after-school Victor Care Program for some years prior to that. A well-deserved retirement, the sweetest, most beautiful, most patient woman. She will miss it, but certainly deserves to have a great, long, and healthy retirement and become the daycare of all her grandchildren, so. Thank you, Mom. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say one thing? I just want to take this time. Most people dream about going to a game at Soldier Field. The Calumet City Chargers, seven and eight-year-olds, played on the field this past weekend, and they won. Having been, the Bears seem to win, but they won. Congratulations, kids from Calumet City playing at Soldier Field.
Thank you, Alderman. So there be no further business to come before the City Council. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:29 PM?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. All in favor, I'm sorry. Meeting adjourned at 8:29 PM.